Welcome to the February 28th, 2023 City Council meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Taylor, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Pray with me. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. Give us unity, Father, as we make decisions for this great city of Lynchburg. Father, I ask that you watch over the city, protect the citizens, Father. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great majesty of our.
Tonight, we have a recognition, a runner-friendly community designation, presented by Brett Bowman, President of the Lynchburg Road Runners Club. Mr. Bowman, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Brett Bowman. I'm President of the Lynchburg Road Runner Club. With me, I have, if you don't know him, Jeff Fedorko. He is the owner of our local running store, Riverside Runners. And in addition to conducting nearly all the local road races, Jeff is our current and the longest-serving race director for the Moore &amp; Giles Virginia 10-miler. So we're here tonight to present the city with this plaque that recognizes Lynchburg's continuance as a runner-friendly community. In 2012, we were one of the first communities in the U.S. to be, to get this recognition. And in November 2022, we got our second renewal. We're only a handful of communities that have this designation. And you might have two questions. What's the Road Runner Club of America? And what's a runner-friendly community? So founded in 1958, the Road Runner Club of America is the oldest and largest national organizations of runners and running organizations with over 900 clubs nationally. Our local club, the Lynchburg Road Runners Club, was founded in, 50 years ago, in 1973, and created the Virginia 10-miler, which will celebrate its 50th anniversary next year. As a runner-friendly community, the city of Lynchburg continues to meet the program's criteria of runner-friendly. And what this means is we have the community infrastructure, the community support, and the local government's support for running. Each community has shown they continue to invest in infrastructure that can foster physical activity in a safe environment. And they have a proven track record that organizations and businesses work together to promote running as a healthy exercise and sport, with the most important criteria being positive relationships between the running community and the local government. And in closing, I want to personally thank you, the city, for their continued support. And if you're not already planning to run the 10-miler, run the 4-miler, or walk the 4-miler, I want to invite you to come to the starting line, September 30th, at 7:30 a.m., watch the race. And I guarantee you that you'll walk away inspired, and you will be so proud of what this city presents, not only to the local running community, but the national running community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Lovely. Yes?
Madam Mayor, if I may, with all due respect, I don't think the topography is a runner-friendly city. But thank you for the word.
Thank you very much. Okay. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into three sections: public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is public hearing. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure: Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter rests with council for deliberation. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the Harrisonburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority for Wesley Apartments. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Dr. John Hughes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. This item was brought to you during the February 14th work session as a business item briefing. Wesley Lynchburg Housing LP, the property owner, intends to renovate the existing senior housing located at 1201 Long Meadows Drive in the city using rental revenue bonds. The bonds were requested through the Harrisonburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority due to an ongoing working relationship between them and the owner, as well as a favorable rate. Other than approving use of these bonds, the locality nor the local authority have any obligation to do anything with the property. McGuire Woods sent public notice within the required timeframe ahead of this public hearing. And Ms. Ann Curtis with McGuire Woods, representing the owner, is here if you do have any additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for Dr. Hughes. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? No? Any emails or phone calls?
There are none.
Okay. Well, the public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Any discussion? No discussion?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Come in.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes. Set to hear.
Okay. Great. Moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing an amendment to a parking lease agreement between Republic Parking System LLC and the city of Lynchburg. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Andrew Legala.
Need a helicopter. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you recall, the airport lease amendment before council tonight was previously presented as a business information briefing during the February 14th work session. Republic Parking Systems is the airport's longstanding airline terminal parking operator and has requested an amendment to its current lease in order to upgrade outdated parking equipment with new parking and revenue control system at the Lynchburg Regional Airport. The new system will consist of purchasing and installing the latest technology for controlling vehicles entering and exiting the terminal lot, and will incorporate a monitoring process that features a direct connection to Republic's call center in order to assist customers during non-staffing hours of operation. Lease terms include Republic being responsible for all repairs and maintenance associated with the new park system. This amendment will extend Republic's current lease for an additional five years to commence on March 1st. Due to the level of Republic's investment in the new equipment and associated infrastructure, the current revenue-sharing percentages in the lease have also been adjusted to allow for cost recovery. As prescribed under state code, the lease was advertised for a one-week period on February 15th to solicit bids from interested parking management companies. With no other bids having been received, staff is recommending that City Council approve this request and authorize a city manager to execute the amendment to Republic's lease. The Lynchburg Regional Airport Commission has been briefed on this process as well and also recommends City Council accept the lease amendment. At the conclusion of public hearing, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any emails or phone calls?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Any discussion? Vice Mayor Feraldi?
I'll move approval. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Come in.
Okay, let's vote. Wonderful. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the extension of a lease agreement between the Lynchburg Municipal Employees Federal Credit Union and the city of Lynchburg. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Gaynell Hart, hi.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This item came before you on January 24th as a business item briefing. The Lynchburg Credit Union is located at Stadium Caretaker's House. We've been in agreement with them since 1999, and we're just renewing the lease that'll take it through 2028.
Okay. Wonderful. So anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Timothy Santiago, Lynchburg City. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I only just wish to say while I support this, this council, this council or previous council had opportunity to renew this. It shouldn't have taken this long to sit there and just let this run on a month-to-month lease. I ask to hold yourself, I ask you to hold yourselves more accountable when looking at these services that benefit our city employees, who work hard to maintain a functional city government, which isn't easy because some of us citizens are a pain in the butt. So I just ask that when something like this happens again, when it comes up for renewal, that this council act in a manner that shows its appreciation towards its city employees so that services can go, and their benefits can go, much more smoothly than a month-to-month lease. That's all your, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any calls or emails?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Any discussion? Councilman Missions?
I just want to say as a member of the Municipal Employees Federal Credit Union that it is a valuable resource for our employees, and I will be approving this, and I motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Nope. Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes. Set to hear.
Wonderful. Okay. Moving on. Next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, City Council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from this audience are not permitted. When appearing before City Council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults. Others engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity, or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear from a group representative regarding a matter. Mr. Gary Taylor, please state your name and locality of residence.
Ms. Finney, have you passed them out? I don't want to stand up there yet. I only got three minutes. All right. So Ms. Finney has passed out my handout that I'll be referring to. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Gary Taylor, Windhurst area of Virginia. Been coming to council for a few years, so I'll dive right into it. My letter on the top is to the mayor, and it speaks directly to the point about the elected versus appointed school board issue that's currently being discussed in Lynchburg. They're not, they are mutually exclusive events with regards to an elected-appointed school board versus resetting the school board, which this council is going to do this summer. So you don't have to choose between an appointed school board and elected school board when you reset the school board dynamics this summer. So that's a very important point that's been misunderstood in the community. This is not about either-or. You can do both in parallel times, and you should. So that's number one. This is not a Republican or a Democrat issue. This is not a Republican or a Democrat issue. This is a unaccountable cronyism, appointed school board antiquated system versus an accountable, elected school board system. It's simple as that. It's really just a kindergarten art. It's unaccountable versus accountable. There's no other, all the other stuff's just a bunch of political spin. So the next page in there will cover about what's happened over the last 20 years. Don't need to go through this. I provide all this so you guys may have some dialogue and discussion later on. All I'm simply coming for is asking for somebody to put a resolution forward that will say the City Council of Lynchburg, Virginia supports an elected school board system. That's all I'm asking for. So a lot of paperwork in there, but that's all I'm asking. It's a non-binding vote, like what you've done before. There's a pathway to an elected school board. I've outlined it. Vice Mayor Feraldi's already took the first step. All you got to do is follow the process. Resetting of Lynchburg City schools, you're already going to do it. School board questions, concerns, and barriers, there was a great article by our local reporter, Bryson Gordon, this last weekend, talks about no more closed-door meetings. Does talk about somebody's going to fix, fix a school board that is irreparably broken. You can't fix something that is irreparable. You need to change. So that'll be the next thing. And the rest of it's outlined. That's what I'm, really have no more to say. But it's really about just asking the council to show the support for the citizens and the voters so that they can support us, and maybe the city manager or city attorney might have other things we can do, like go down to the farmer's market and gather signatures.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Okay. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter. Beth White, please state your name and locality of residence.
Madam Mayor, regarding what you said a little while ago about, you know, speakers should not be intimidated, I was told when I was in high school and even at my job that I can be intimidating. I'm going to try my best to behave and not be intimidating. My name is Beth White. I reside in Oak Ridge Boulevard, Ward 3. Jeff, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm going to name off some familiar names. Astronaut Leland Melvin, Pastor Jerry Falwell, historian Douglas Southhall Freeman. These are all native Lynchburgers who were no doubt proud of their hometown. Lynchburg is a city with a very rich history. It is where Jefferson proved that tomatoes were not poisonous. Our city was the second wealthiest in the entire country, not just the Commonwealth, but the entire country during the 1830s and 1840s, largely because of tobacco. Lynchburg was so important that General Grant wanted to capture it even for just a single day in 1864. Why am I giving you all of this history? In 1985, some of you may remember former coach Mayor Jimmy Bryan, and he had as his slogan, "It's a great day to be alive in Lynchburg, Virginia." I echo Mayor Bryan's sentiment, or at least it should be. You know, I've been attending City Council meetings for quite some time since last August, and I've watched the actions of council become increasingly troubling. There's been more drama over the past few months than one finds on a soap opera. Why is that? You are our elected leaders. We, the voters, have placed each of you in those honored seats to carry out the city's business. We did not elect you to bully each other, call each other names, or pass notes like middle-school bullies. We have become fodder for news outlets and other parts of the Commonwealth. It's embarrassing, and I ask you to please stop. Regarding our tax relief, I want tax relief just like everyone else. Having served on a finance committee, I understand the importance of keeping within a budget, making the hard choices. You know, you spent several hours at a budget retreat, and you gathered data. You gathered information. You got numbers. And it's also known the property assessment's going to go up 20% in May. So why would you give me money back now, only to take it back and then some more in May? I implore you to wait for the new assessments and then look at what can be done for relief. I don't care what form it comes in, you know. I don't care if it's a tax credit, if it's money off the water bill that increasingly goes up. I don't care. But do it once, do it right. At the end of the day, this is still Lynchburg, the greatest city in the Commonwealth, and I'll argue that with anybody. It is not Richmond or Washington, D.C. This is Lynchburg. It's time that our elected leaders act like it. We, the voters, expect better.
Thank you, Ms. White. Okay. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter. Timothy Santiago, please state your name and your locality of residence, please.
Timothy Santiago, Lynchburg City. To deliver services to the city residents, workers, and visitors in an efficient and effective, efficient, effective, and equitable manner to build a stronger community, that's your mission, as stated on the city website verbatim. And to build in an effective, efficient, and equitable manner. Two weeks ago, I spoke to you about decorum, and then by end of the meeting, once again, with respect to this council, Madam Mayor, and members of council, you were the laughing stock on different news outlets because decorum could not be maintained. The city charter gives you an immense amount of power. It gives you your powers to sit up there, sit there and debate on the dais and to pass laws that affect us on a day-to-day basis, whether it be our property taxes, our firefighters, our police officers, all the way down to trash services, which is just equally as important. But yet you can't do this, it seems. For the past three meetings, council has been ineffective. You have not lived up to your mission. Part of the city charter, reading verbatim, is, "And for the convenient transaction of businesses may compel the absence, the attendance of absent members, may punish its members for disorderly behavior, and by a vote of two-thirds of its members, may expel a member from office." Actions have consequences. If this body can't maintain decorum, then maybe it's time to look at using a piece of the charter this city has never used. I call upon any member that feels that they might breach decorum, or any member that feels that they might have been disrespectful, to apologize to the member that they were disrespectful to and the members that they may have offended. Let's reset the clock here. Stop being the laughing stock. Be the body that we entrusted you, be the body with the authority in which we entrusted. Stop being ineffective. Over the past six weeks, you have not been effective. You have not done the powers that is outlined in the city charter. So if a member can't apologize for something that they did wrong, I call upon members to resign with immediate effect and make way for this council to do the business. Because if you can't maintain decorum, then you can't, you can't be on this, you should not be on the dais. To former Councilman Nelson, a member that I respected greatly, he spoke with elegance. He spoke with respect, even when he disagreed. I call upon you to do the same. And once again, if you can't, it's time, it's time to go. It's time to step down and make way so that we can continue to do the business of the city and that you may continue to do the business. With that, I yield, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Did we have an email? Or no, no other comments? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget and appropriating $1,099,856 from the unexpended fiscal year 2022 schools operating fund appropriations for transfer to the fiscal year 2023 schools capital fund to fund needs as approved by the school board. Council was previously briefed on this item during its January 24th, 2023 business item briefings. Any discussion? Vice Mayor Feraldi?
I move approval for the security improvements associated with the request from the school system.
Do I have a second?
Can you, I'm trying to find it. It's not broken down in two separate things. I just see the total amount of $1 million.
Because there was exterior building envelope repairs, rent, and school security upgrades.
Correct.
Madam Mayor, I think what I'm seeing, maybe just wait to correct it if I'm wrong.
Oh, I got it. It's down a few.
It's on a December 9th, 2022 letter. I think there's one for a request for security vestal installation at $260,000. R.S. Payne structural and building envelope repair, $749,856, and a structural analysis and repair for various schools at $90,000.
Madam Mayor, I renew my motion. I renew the motion for the security improvements totaling what the city attorney outlined for $260,000.
Do you want to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am.
Do you want to speak to your second? Any discussion? So the, so the motion is to only approve $260,000 of the appropriated money to, to just cover the security improvements? Yes, go ahead. I count to one. Wilder.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a substitute motion and approve all the items the school board has requested for us. And we have an appointed school board that knows the conditions of our school system, and they request to use those adequately funds, those, the funds from the, from the reserve funds, adequately to repair the school buildings that we own. So I'd like to make a substitute motion, if I can, and make a motion that we approve all the items the school board has requested those funds be used for.
Do I have a second on the substitute?
Second.
Okay. Do you want to speak to your second?
You know, again, as I already stated pretty much, that the school board, we have a school board that we've appointed to manage the school system. They know the conditions of the buildings. We already talked about the conditions of Payne and other schools, and we talked about earlier today that when you put items aside, they're going to get worse. So if we don't start addressing issues now, we're going to be in trouble later on, either pay now or pay later. So there's a fund that they've, that they've allocated for this particular reserve fund, from the, from the funds that are going forward, and I recommend we use all those.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes. Yeah, I agree with what Councilmember Wilder just said, and I also think that, number one, if we were going to not let LCS retain the circles, we probably should have given them a little advance notice instead of doing it at 12-hour. I think, you know, I look back over a period of six, seven years, and LCS historically has used this money for providing safety and fixing the buildings that the city owns. So I think that it's really important that we continue to allow them to do that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
I appreciate the commentary in the substitute motion. I, no doubt, there are needs in the schools that were listed in the documents that have been shown to us. Obviously, there's needs that need to be addressed, should have been addressed years ago. I was talking, if I may, with Councilmember Taylor about some of these needs, and we both came to the same conclusion. This doesn't happen just over six months. It happens over multiple years of neglect or, or issues in a facility. Obviously, there's needs there, and I, I want to communicate an expectation that, you know, these funds come back to the city outside of the security improvements, that we work them into the upcoming budget. If we find that the highest and best use for those funds should go to those improvements, they should. And I stand ready to work with that. If we find that they should go to a different area, I think we should work through that and see what it looks like. I will note, with all due respect, Councilmember Dolan, I, I indicated this is the direction I wanted to go in, in December, and I've been fairly public about that. No deception or anything of that sort has been intended in this. I've been pretty explicit in my desires to do this. So I will be opposing the substitute motion. I ask my colleagues to do the same, and I do commit to working the upcoming budget process that if these funds should still go back to, to these projects, we should certainly explore it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Huguson?
All things considered, these pictures that I received from superintendent, this work need to be done immediately. If we have the funds to do this immediately, it need to be done. We got children in, in the school. This is Payne's school. You know, security, true, but we got to protect our children. Children in, this is in the auditorium. I visited school, the school children was over there in the auditorium playing, and you can get asthma and everything else from this stuff. It was neglect, very much neglect on somebody, somebody's head. This is about five, six years' worth of damage. It should not have been on anybody's watch. We got to protect our children.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Huggins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, in, in looking at this, I think the process, rather than just saying, okay, we have $1,099,856, and here are some projects that actually meet nicely into that extra, we should actually look at bringing it back. bringing it back in the budget like we would do for any other project. When we bring it up, this hasn't been allocated, it hasn't been earmarked by council. It should come back to the city, and then in the upcoming budget, it'd be easy enough to say, if this is truly a desperate need, it can be allocated at that time. It's not going to be done before that time anyway. I mean, we're looking at, what are we in? It's end of February. Once the allocation happens and the work gets done, it isn't going to be much difference of time, because I don't think they're going to do it until the summer. And so the budget will be approved, and, and I just think we need to begin the process of saying, let's take a, a clean break, rather than just the schools get to keep all the excess money. They'll say, here's the important issues, and we'll prioritize those issues. And security is obviously one that is on everybody's mind, making sure our children are safe. And if these other two items come and rise to that high level, where our city staff, we had a, a meeting today with our capital improvement plan, $319 million, $500 million after 2028. There's lots of needs in the city. I think it would be best if we said, let's kind of look at this and let staff address, what are the highest and best uses of these? So I, I'm, I'm prepared to, to vote in favor of the $260,000 at this time. And if, if the day rules later that there's, some of these other items are good, we can do that at a later time. But I, I'll be voting against this motion and, and voting for the original motion.
House Missions?
Yeah, so this is pretty torn here. Because I, I agree with Councilmember Taylor that these repairs do need to happen at RS Payne, but it did take many years of negligence and just ignoring the problem for it to look like it looks in those photos. Let's just be real. And we've got a lot of needs coming ahead for our entire city. We can't just think about the school division or the school system as well. So with that, I'm going to be voting against the substitute motion on the floor and supporting the original motion. And what I would like to see is, let's put this as a high priority in the capital improvement plan moving forward. And look at some less necessary items that we can pull off of there. That's all.
Thank you, I appreciate the information. Again, the school board has a system in place where the staff members are reviewing the property. So they reviewed the property, made an assessment, and these are some of the structures that need to be done immediately. So with our excess funds, these are the, this is the direction that we want our school system to go in. They have a board of educated, majority of them are doctors. They are board of persons that we've appointed. They have staff members who know the school system in and out, know the facilities. They might have all the funds to do everything they like to do. We don't have all the funds to do what we like to do. My house is 150 years old. Sometimes it has issues. I maintain my house, I get contracted to do my house, to do this, do that. But still sometimes, even the old house, it's still going to have some issues, even though, because it's 150 years old. Payne is one of the oldest schools in our school system. I'm not even sure how old it is, but it's one of the oldest schools. So if you got an old building like that, you're going to have some issues. So they've identified some funds to address these issues immediately. Ms. Council, Mr. Taylor, just mentioned about what more can do. They have identified some items that need to be done immediately, instead of putting it off and waiting to another cycle. We need to go ahead and approve these funds and shift them back over to the school system so they can use these funds to make these necessary adjustments. Thank you.
You know, my, my concern is this, that if we don't approve this, this council will find other ways to use that money, and it will, it will be delayed and delayed again. I really feel that, you know, we need to take some action on this tonight and approve it. Thank you.
I'll, I'll speak to, before we vote. I did do my tour of RS Payne with Councilman Taylor, and I specifically wanted to go with him since his area of expertise is repair and building. And so I'm, I'm trust, I trusted his opinion on the situation. It, it does seem urgent, and, and I don't think the biggest concern in my case is, at this point, how long it's taken to get there, because regardless, it, it is what it is. And there are students in there and teachers in there suffering from the conditions of the school. And it's expensive repairs, and they need to be done. And that's what Councilman Taylor agreed, based on his expertise. So that's what we saw, and it's concerning. So let's go ahead and vote on the substitute motion. Oh, Vice Mayor Feraldi, yes?
If I may, would Councilmember Wilder be willing to withdraw his substitute, let us pass the, the security measures? And if you would like, I'm amenable to taking up a standalone vote on the repairs, if, if that's a path forward you would like. What that would afford, what that would afford is for us to take up individual line items on the security features and the improvements. And if it passes, then it accomplishes your goal. And if it fails, then we can still revisit in the upcoming budget. That is a very, I believe that's a fair compromise to engage this procedurally.
You can do it that way. But again, why do we have to go through that process of going over and over things again and again? I mean, to me, it just makes no sense. I don't, I mean, I'm just sorry. It makes no sense to me to keep having to do stuff over and over again. And we've got to take several motions on each individual item, and we could just pass them all at one time. But we can go ahead, we go ahead, let's go ahead. Let's move along, come on, let's go.
Madam Mayor, if you'd be amenable to that?
Yes.
So, so, Madam Mayor, as I understand it, if Councilmember Wilder is agreeing, and he is, we're withdrawing his substitute. We'll vote on the security measures, and then if the council member would like, he could motion for the, the rest of the funds. And if it passes, it passes; if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay, so we're voting on the original motion, which is to approve the $260,000 that's allocated, or towards the security vestigials. You agree to this?
Just, just, that is just simply dividing the question. And so it's, I think that's a perfectly good option, and thank you for that. Good, good idea.
Let's go ahead and vote, please.
So this on the security, the $260,000?
The $260,000 towards the security vestigials.
I make a motion that we approve the rest of the remaining items that the school board has requested that we approve.
Any discussion?
I think we've discussed enough. Thank you.
Okay, so if you agree to voting for the remaining money to go towards the repairs for the school?
The additional repairs, yes.
Eight hundred and fifty, or so, eight forty.
The remaining amount, yes. Go ahead.
Eight hundred and forty thousand.
All right, moving on. Consideration of adopting resolution to either terminate or modify a 1993 letter of agreement between Lynchburg City's council and Lynchburg Board of School Trustees, related to the city's school operating fund balance and the financial practices contemplated thereby. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Matthew Friedman, Dr. James Coleman of the School Board Chair, and Dr. Crystal Edwards, Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As city council will recall, the last time we addressed the agreement, what we had discussed is the option of either terminating the agreement and proceeding in a different direction, or doing some, or proposing some type of modification to the agreement. As part of that discussion, there was an informal request that I notified the school board, just to make sure they were in the loop, see if they had anything to say. They did prepare response, and as I understand it, Dr. Coleman and Dr. Edwards are both here to speak as part of this presentation. In anticipation of one of the two options being sought by city council, I've prepared what, what is shown before you as an option. One, resolution that is to terminate the letter of agreement between the council and the school board, as well as an option two, that allows for city council to propose a modification in some fashion to the school board. And I guess with that, I'll yield the rest of my time to Dr. Coleman and Dr. Edwards.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, congratulations, and to the distinguished members of Lynchburg City Council. Thank you for the outstanding way that you are deporting yourself in this meeting. And we received from our city attorney a request acknowledging this fund balance that is being discussed for termination or modification. I do want to say tonight that I have with us the vice chair of the Lynchburg City School Board. We also have Martin Day, Dr. Day, who is a member of our legislative advocacy and community relations committee, as well as attorney Randall Tross, who is with us, and our deputy superintendent Reed Waterco. I submitted to each of you all a statement from the school board, and Madam Mayor, I wouldn't dare read that to you all if you already have it, but if you would like, I can read the letter that I submitted, which is the pleasure of council.
Go ahead and read it.
Okay, thank you. The Lynchburg City School Board received the letter on January 30, 2023, from Matthew C. Freeman, notifying us of our intent to reconsider the 1993 letter of agreement between city council and Lynchburg City Schools concerning the school district's operating fund balance. The school board has discussed this issue together and wishes to bring to city council's attention several considerations before you make your decision. Whether or not the 1993 agreement continues, the Lynchburg City School Board has worked under the assumption that the city council has the authority to deny or approve requests to return those funds, all or in part, to LCS. It is not clear to the board that the 1993 agreement limits city council's authority over those funds in any way. The agreement thus, by our interpretation, constitutes only an understanding that requests for returns of fund balance for specific purposes will generally be entertained by city council. Rescinding of the 1993 agreement would imply that the city council would not be receptive to future return of fund balance requests. Hence, needs that we might have been addressed through fund balance return would have to be added to future LCS operating budgets or added to the city council's budget. Either result will increase future operating budgets of either the Lynchburg City Schools or the city of Lynchburg. In addition, it would also lengthen the time between the identification of unanticipated critical projects and when work on these projects might begin. The existing agreement allows at least some of those unanticipated projects to be addressed more quickly and with funds already allocated to the schools. Since the majority of requests for utilizing the fund balance over the past five years has been for capital improvement projects for school buildings, the use of funds seem to be a win-win for both LCS and the city of Lynchburg. It has been surmised that there were reasons this agreement was put in place in 1993, presumably to eliminate practices that had taken place in the past. It has been suggested that rescinding the agreement would once again create reasons for LCS to find ways to spend down its fund balance as the end of the fiscal year approaches. Instead of rescinding the 1993 agreement, the LCS board recommends that it be completely revised to more clearly outline the handling of the LCS fund balance. The LCS board suggests that in addition to reporting the fund balance annually, the new agreement would allow LCS to submit items to be considered for fund balance expenditures. Ultimately, the LCS board would like to have a new agreement that strengthens the partnership between the board and city council to use the community's financial resources in the best manner possible to support the students and staff of our schools. The board is pleased to submit its input regarding the management of the LCS fund balance. Madam Mayor, that is a statement that all of the board members agreed on to present to you tonight regarding this matter. And at this time, we recognize repairs, reserves, renovations, replacements are very much needed, and we are being good stewards on our part, and we want to work together strongly with you in this matter. That concludes my statement, and of course, Dr. Edwards is here, if there are questions that you may have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, Dr. Edwards, and to the members of the board, appreciate you coming out. I, I am inclined to remove the agreement. I've articulated that before, if I can tonight, but yeah, just so we're all on the same page. I, I don't believe that's how it's been articulated to me. In my experience on council, this, I won't say it's been used as a weapon, that's a bit too strong, but it's been used as an, as a negotiation stick to say, wait a minute, Councilmember Feraldi, this is an agreement, we're compelled to vote and approve the requests, and, and that's been communicated to me by now former members of, of council, and, and that's why I have taken the stance I've taken, is, well, let's remove it. But coupled with that, far be it from me not to hear from what you all say, these are needs that we have, and we ask you to consider using these funds for these reasons, just like we did moments before you all came up. And so however we proceed, regardless of the agreement or not, I'm inclined to hear, you have leftover funds? Here's how we request you use them. Is that an official agreement between the two bodies? I don't think that's necessary. Being the fiduciary side, I would be inclined to say, council, we should work into our budget and expectation that if there's leftover funds, hey, school board, what, what, what do you think that should be used for? This is very similar, but it also takes a lot of the binding elements that have been articulated on this dais. It takes that away. So, number one, I, I am inclined to pull it. Far be it from me to, to say, I don't want the open line of communication to continue, and I would hope this council would continue to allocate some of those requests. And, you know, I, I remain willing to, to hear those and, and do, do my part. So that's my take on it as it stands right now. I, I'm willing to make a motion, but I also want to respect what my other colleagues have to say on this matter.
If, if I might, Vice Mayor, the communication is awesome. Obviously, Mayor Adams and Chair Sigler, in a gentleman's agreement, entered in this with not being something legally binding. I, I just want to make sure that we are clear that over a few years, we've gone from maybe five or so down to one. There is incredible stewardship and appropriate utilization of funds by our superintendent and staff and board. And when we come to you, we want you to know, it is after we've done everything we can, and we want to have that type of practice understood. I don't know if Dr. Edwards wants to say anymore about that.
Madam Mayor, and Dr. Edwards, please, my only thought is, I, I'm pleased to see it's back down low, but I also, data can be communicated and articulated and shown in many different ways. The average of the last five years has been three and a half or so million dollars. And so by my viewpoint, sure, it's gone down, but it's also been up, and I'm looking at the average. And if, if, you know, even if there was still an agreement that this council decided to go with, if we agreed to, hey, 40% stays with Lynchburg City Schools and 60 goes to city, or, I'm willing to talk about those things. But entering tonight, I'm of the persuasion, let's cancel this, but make it clear, we, we need that open line of communication for what your needs are. And, and that's kind of where I, I stand on it, but thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just want to speak to what you said, Councilmember Feraldi, regarding the intent and whether or not it was used as sort of a, you have to do it. And I know that since I've been here, we've presented fund balance requests, we've worked with Donna and her fantastic team. We've gone back and based on her advice, we've revised them, we've changed them, we've done some collaborative things. We pulled money out, put money in other places that the city has suggested. At one point, we were trying to increase our health insurance balance, and there was no reserve, there was discussion about that. So the partnership exists. We do listen to you all, we do take into consideration, and we'll even go back to our own school board to say, hey, this is what we discussed with council, and this makes sense, let's do this. So that part of the agreement has been there, and, and this council, this board, along with myself, have had that working relationship, and we want to continue that. The other thing that I would just like to say is, I, you know, I heard that if this agreement goes away, there's a fear that, you know, we might just spend money for spending it. I would offer, what has stopped us from doing that right now? What has stopped us from doing that in the last five years? And we haven't, and as a matter, as a matter of fact, when we have had savings, rather than spending it, we have brought it back to this council to say, particularly in years where we were struggling with staffing and open positions, and we were unable to either fill positions for the full year or part of the year, and that's a big part of our budget, that's over 80% of our budget, the staffing- That's over eighty percent of our budget, the staffing. That money, we have come back to council, we have not had any plans to, hey, let's spend it and make sure that we don't come back to you all. And then we look for wins, we understand that you all own the buildings, and we're the stewards of the building, the buildings are older, and sometimes things just happen on older buildings that are unexpected, we saw that over winter break, what happened in multiple buildings. And I would say it's not a matter of neglect, as it is, we're making choices, and we're having our staff, our staff did a fantastic job of getting buildings up and running, but we also had to have contracted services to do some major lifting in some of our buildings as well. And those things we discuss with you, too. So we're doing everything in full transparency and in accountability, we're not trying to hide anything, we're trying to work with you to bring the best educational decisions for our students for.
Ms. Dole, sorry.
Well, my concern is that without the agreement, I don't know how you address immediate concerns, immediate things that have to be addressed now. And I know I trust my council members who say that, you know, we'll look at it, but it won't be in our budget, and you'll say, well, that's not in our budget, we can't give the money to schools to repair a roof or whatever comes up. So I, it's almost like an insurance for LCS that they will have money available should they need it. And they have to come to us anyway to get it approved, so what's the point in getting rid of the agreement? I don't get it.
Councilwoman Higginson.
Thank you. You know, I think Councilmember Feraldi was talking about making a motion before other people talk, and I'm prepared to make a motion that we, so we can talk about something specifically. And I'll make a motion that we adopt option one, which is terminating the agreement. So now if I can speak to that, you know, this is a thirty-year-old agreement. There's lots of things that we heard, we just heard Councilmember Dole a minute ago saying, with the last allocation, saying, well, the school board didn't know. Well, now, it's basically a year from now, so now we're saying, okay, within the next year, when the fund balance comes up again next year, just like we looked at a moment ago, now would be the time to actually give them ample notice, well in advance, that these funds are actually, hopefully they'll still be the surplus that comes back to our citizens or comes back to the city. And with that, then we can actually allocate and say, what are the highest and best uses? We have lots of needs, maybe most of those needs are in the school system. Maybe they're in the buildings, you know, a couple of things that I've been really concerned about over the last several years, the last several decades, quite frankly, is this very large decline in enrollment. The enrollment has declined and declined where we're down to like seventy-four hundred kids. Our population has grown tremendously, but the enrollment has declined tremendously as well. Should be going kind of hand in glove, going kind of side by side. With that being the case, it has become much more imperative that the school system that we talked about four, five years ago, as far as consolidation, as far as recognizing redistricting, I haven't seen anything to that regard. We have schools that, you know, some of the county schools have five hundred and fifty kids in an elementary school. We have some schools that are a hundred and sixty kids. Consolidation, I know it's a tough thing, but it's something that should have been done and addressed. I think when we talked about when you first came here five years ago. I was sad to see that some of those things haven't happened. I think having this agreement and starting afresh, I mean, this has been thirty years, it's been a long time. I think it's time to start afresh. Every budget year, after the time that comes with the surplus is there, you could say, here is what we would like to use it for, but at least there's not the implicit, that find whatever you want to spend it on and you get it back. Because last year, a couple times ago, I remember seeing some things that were almost operational expenses, that really were kind of pushing it to be a capital expenditure. And so I really hope that we can just say, let's rip up this thirty-year-old agreement, let's still have the dialogue every year when there's actually, you know, pressing needs for the school buildings. Hopefully, you'll work with Gaynell and Public Works and our buildings and grounds, and we can begin to start consolidating some resources, we can begin to start consolidating some schools, and really realize that these are our citizens' money, and we've got to be very, very efficient. So I do hope that we can start afresh in this budget with, you've got plenty of time, you've got a year in advance where this agreement is, will hopefully no longer be there. Because I agree, as Councilmember Feraldi said, it's kind of been used over your head, you know, it's like, hey, you got to do it, so whatever was said, it's got to be done. So I hope that we can act on this today, thank you.
Councilman Misschus.
So kind of echoing on some of the comments that Councilmember Helgason made in, you know, the lunch that we had several months ago. This is a new day in Lynchburg, right? We've got new leadership. We're going to have some new leadership on the school board this summer, because I think you turban out, don't you, Dr. Dole? Yep, so we'll we'll be inviting at least one, at least one new board member this summer. And, you know, so things are going to be headed in a different direction likely. And I don't want to be bound by a thirty-year-old agreement. And I also want our city manager to focus on what's necessary in capital improvement projects in our schools, because they're very important, right? We need to focus on what's necessary with the tax dollars. We need to focus on investing in our classrooms, we need to focus on keeping our kids safe. We need to focus on them being in habitable schools, right? But we need to do it with good stewardship. So I'll be joining Councilmember Helgason to rescind this agreement, and I'm excited about the dialogue that that'll bring forward, because then you're going to have to come see us, and we'll have a great conversation every time there's a need. And I'm actually excited about that, because that's going to get us more involved, we're going to have more information, right? And there's going to be a greater dialogue with the community here in council chambers about the needs of Lynchburg City Schools and how City Council can support those.
Dr. Wilder.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we keep the contract intact the way it is. I'd like to speak to that motion.
Go ahead.
You know, again, I served on the school board for nine years. Every time it came to the fund balance, we always, it wasn't like expected, we always came to City Council, and we brought those items to City Council, and we listed out the items that we needed to approve on or build upon. School buses, roofs, HVAC systems, or whatever the case may be, it has always been the practice. I look at situations like at Liberty University and other institutions, how we've changed the process in which they can go about approving buildings and building sites. We make the process simpler for people like Liberty University and other great institutions in our community to streamline the process, so they wanted to come and see the council every time they wanted to build a new building. And we've seen how that has worked, but now we want to change the process. You know, with a process that's been working for thirty years, keep going, if it's not broke, if it's not broken, leave it alone, let it go the way it is. And I look at our school system, we talk about declining enrollment, yes, our enrollment has declined, and yes, now, we are more, we are urban school system, we have more children of color than we have the Caucasian children. It's more children of color. So we have an urban school system, and you have some poverty issues, you have more challenges than a place like Forest would have versus a school system like Lynchburg. So you have more issues and challenges in educating our children, in making sure kids are going to pre-K and other early childhood programs, the men that have access to do so, if they don't get their early learning process, they're going to have more challenges. So in educating our children, you're going to have more challenges. You have computer labs more so in our school system, whereas at certain homes, they've got computers in every room, and our kids don't have computers at home, they're trying to find a hotspot to do a homework assignment, and they can't. So our children have a learning different environment than what they're in, and we're not going to talk about other issues they have to fight with. We had a young lady that died on Thursday, Friday night, a young lady, because of just things in our environment. We had a shooting last week in our school, and we're not a street, but some situation in our community the other week. So our children are having some challenges, trauma, we're going to talk about trauma from being in COVID and trauma from other issues, so trauma of poverty, trauma of bullying. So our kids have some issues that they're facing, so we've got to make sure we support them. And then you have a high education population of special ed, you can't just put special ed kids in a room of five hundred kids. You've got to separate them to make sure they, even though they have a learning disability, they still deserve the right for an education in a smaller classroom that's benefiting them. One thing about our school system, you have to educate all children, the way they come, you can't select, I'm going to select this little boy, I'm going to select Johnny, I'm going to select Sally, you've got to select Hakeem, you've got to select Shaquille, you've got to select everybody, the way they come, with baggage or not, you've got to still collect them, and you've got to still educate them. So again, we're in a different environment, we keep talking about the schools are losing, losing people at the same size. As you can tell, we talked about it at the last meeting, there were no empty classrooms, they're used for small learning, they lose for day treatment, they lose for credit recovery, they're used for variety of things. It's not like you have a whole bunch of buildings just sitting there empty. So we need to continue to talk about that, and we'll continue to talk about that. Another thing, we always have dialogue continuously with our meetings, and we can always go to school board meetings, and also you meet monthly with the superintendent here, with the mayor and the city manager, monthly. And if we gave you all the money you needed, we said things have been going aside like with pain, and the city addressed a long time ago, I bet you can give me a hundred million dollars of renovations you need today. And if you brought it to us, they was, oh, no, this is too much, but they're improvements you need right now, but we're not going to fund it. And we must be honest, several schools need to be renovated, but you can't bring all that to us, it would blow our minds, and you can't do it, you would like to, so you've got to go through a priority list of what needs to be done. These are our children that we have to educate. And we talk about we love education, and we want to support kids in our schools, but that's not what I hear in these conversations. I want to select this, I want to select that. What about my children in war, too? What about kids who are in poverty, who need some little help in learning? But, oh, no, we've got to make the class size larger. But that's why I'm making a motion, we leave it the way it is, I trust your judgment, I trust all the school board members, I trust their judgment over the past, I'm the only, yes, I'm the only product of Lynchburg's school system. And I appreciate the educational process that I have learned, that I have received all of my life. And my children are products of that school system as well. So I'm going to continue to fight for the kids of our community that don't have a voice, so they can know they have a place at the table, and somebody is fighting for them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dole.
I don't think I have anything to add to that, but my thought is, if you don't like a thirty-year-old agreement, why don't we just date it currently?
I said what?
I said if you don't like a thirty-year-old agreement, why don't we just date it currently? That's it.
Councilman Missions.
The only thing I have to add to Councilmember Wilder's comments is that, and really, everybody's here, is that that agreement didn't prevent this from happening. This didn't happen overnight, and that's a concern I have. So that's why I want to have these discussions moving forward about what the needs are. And then let's address what is the most critical first.
Councilwoman Dole.
That sounds a bit punitive to me. I mean, they were addressing the needs as they saw them as they came up.
And I appreciate that, but the fact is, is that if the agreement is to prevent things from going into disrepair and to prevent this sort of stuff from happening, well, it didn't happen. So I think that we need to revisit and reevaluate how we're doing that moving forward so that we can prevent our kids from being in these situations.
Dr. Wilder, sorry.
So that means, so basically what I'm hearing him say is that you look at all the schools in our school system, and you bring back a list of everything that needs to be done, whether it's two hundred million dollars or whatever the case may be, and then we're going to give you the money, because they are our buildings, and these are things that need to be done. And I've seen several plans, I've seen several issues, we made that retreat the other day at the Business Center. I've seen all those plans, all the items that need to be done, I've seen it, I've seen it. Just let's fund it all.
Councilwoman Dole.
Well, I just want to say I have a whole list of everything that's been done with the fund balance since 2017. And, you know, it's difficult to fit everything in, and I'm sure the reason that wasn't done is that there were other things that were more critical at the moment. That's all.
Councilwoman Helgason.
You know, so the substitute motion is to keep everything the same, and just keep the status quo. I think we need some change, I'll be voting against the substitute motion, because I do think we need a little bit of change. I think, you know, and I do, can appreciate that we will have more dialogue. And we're having a lot of dialogue today because we're talking about this. And we're having, we're hearing from you what the concerns are, and that's a good thing. And so I think we, I'll be voting against the substitute motion, and I hope that we can come to the original main motion to not keep status quo, but make a little bit of change.
I think before we vote, I have a question. I'm just curious, this is one of those situations where I'm like, I wish I didn't have to vote right now, because I have so many questions about it. Because there's the proposal for a revised version. And before I vote for or against, I would kind of like to know what a revised version would look like aside from just, you know, Councilwoman Dole's suggestion of redating it, although clever. I think that there's suggestions here kind of that there could be some type of negotiation of something new in the middle of maybe between the two arguments. And aside from having to table something, I don't know if there's a thought of what a revised something would look like, agreement would look like?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and looking at the language of the 1993 agreement that had some real reasons why it was created, those reasons do not exist now, we can talk about that later. But in that language, it doesn't necessarily reinforce the process we have now. We turn the money in, along with that money that we would turn in, we would indicate some of the things that we would need the money for, similar to the items that have been presented since 2017. There'd be dialogue, and we'd talk about it, and then we could be able to hopefully have those monies available to do what we need to do. There's been a suggestion that maybe there'd be a couple of persons from the school board, council, that would sit down and have some discussions about what that would mean and not necessarily deal with this matter tonight. I do want to also say, as I yield to the superintendent for anything she would like to say, that I do appreciate Councilman Wilder's comments. Mr. White, I was on the Planning Commission at the time the institutional zoning was discussed and passed. And it is in that, that a group as large as Lynchburg City Schools, you know, the need to keep coming back. But we want dialogue, and if we didn't have it with one kid, Mr. Helgason, it's our responsibility to make sure that that child learns and has all that they need. And so, Madam Mayor, I would say the nuts and bolts is maybe a little bit more time, more dialogue for a couple of folk from the school board, your side. We don't want to do anything but be good stewards, we're interested in any kind of conversations possible, we just want to make sure that our young people are in buildings, our staff is able to do what they need to do to deliver education in Lynchburg to the best that it is anywhere, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Helgason.
Just one thought, maybe, is, you know, the two options are terminate the agreement, the other option is just keep it as it is. So you terminate the agreement, and then in your idea, come up with, if you do want to come up with an option two, so it's not just done simply on the fly. We go back to terminating, because we've got to terminate the agreement anyway, and as Mayor Jane said, you know, have a new date on it, well, we terminate the agreement, and then if you are so inclined, in the future, we write a new agreement going forward. I think that's a good solution, where you can actually just, rather than trying to do it on the fly or waiting, so just an idea.
Vice President Feraldi.
I move with any question.
Pardon?
Let's vote.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the substitute motion to keep the contract as is. So go ahead and vote.
The motion fails, two, five.
So the main motion now back on the table is the motion to terminate, adopt the resolution that terminates the agreement.
Okay. Vice President Feraldi.
We're casting this vote, willing to negotiate a new agreement, working with you all without an agreement, to hearing what the needs are regardless, and that's the only thing I wanted to say.
And that would be my caveat, is that I want to have a discussion about some type of negotiation, because I think that's warranted. about some type of negotiation because I think that's warranted. So that would be my expectation for council to understand that, yes. Dr. Wilder?
I do not approve of the motion because again, it just, it, it, it makes it more challenging than the process that we already have. We already have a structured process where you bring those items back for approval, for items of the buildings mainly that we own or to help buy a new bus so our kids can go to school safely. So I, I don't approve the motion. I appreciate the motion, I appreciate the procedure that we already have in place and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we're voting on the main motion, which is to get, get out of the, terminate the, terminate the agreement. Go ahead and vote, please.
Councilor Water, are you driven?
Oh, wait, I missed, sorry, I didn't even say.
Oh, sorry, go ahead and vote, please.
The motion passes five two.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating thirty-four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars from the Library of Virginia to preserve several circuit court records. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Todd Swisher, Circuit Court Clerk, thank you, Mr. Swisher. Oh, this item went to our finance committee today, February twenty-eighth, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Feraldi, first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since the good clerk is here, I'd be happy to hear anything he might have to offer. I stand ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'll be very brief tonight. The Library of Virginia offers annual grant funding to circuit courts for the purpose of restoring and preserving historical records. I've already applied for that grant this year. That grant has been accepted and approved by the Library of Virginia in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. But it does require an initial appropriation by the locality or by the city to initially pay for the work that the vendor will do in preserving those records. That's why I'm here tonight, to seek that appropriation. Once that the work is complete, the Library of Virginia will fully reimburse the city for the costs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Again, Madam Mayor, this did go to finance. I thank the clerk for sticking around and being with us.
Sure.
And we reviewed it, everything came out okay on our end. It passed three O unanimous, recommended for approval tonight, and I so move.
Okay, this does not require a second, is there any discussion? No? Okay, please cast your vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next to an item, review and approve the city council's physical development committee guidelines. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Lee Newland?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The physical development committee met on February the fourteenth to review their guidelines. And after a bunch of consideration and discussion, they came up with a few changes and they are listed in your packet as the marked up copy. I can go through them if you specifically want me to or answer any questions.
Did you have anything to say? Larry? Councilman Dolan, sorry.
All I have to say, brother Lee, is that welcome this evening.
Thank you.
And that we, we met, the physical development department committee met and we approve your recommendations and be glad to work with you throughout this tenure.
Okay.
I make the motion that we agree with Mr. Dolan's suggestions.
Okay. This item does not require a second, is there any discussion? No? Okay, please cast your vote. Thank you, Mr. Newland. Okay, moving on. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating fifty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services Grant Program through the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund to purchase one life pack, fifteen monitor, defibrillator and one Lucas three chest compression system for the fire department. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Fire Chief Greg Wormser. This item went to our finance committee today and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Again, Chief, since you're here, if you have anything to add?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. This grant is a biannual grant that we apply for, for the, through the Department of VMS, the State Department of VMS. And typically we apply for things like a Lucas device and a cardiac monitor as these devices, you know, mean a useful life where they're no longer serviceable. And so this grant helps pay for that in the match, something that we're asking for is in reserve for contingencies. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Madam Mayor, this did go to finance. And just, I'll take a bit of personal note for those who don't know what these machines are, or at least the Lucas machines, I know Councilmember Missions certainly does. I've had the unfortunate honor of witnessing what these things do. They're essentially a big machine that they put on your chest that does automatic chest compressions based on your body makeup and how you are and basically frees up our personnel to do things to save your life and not have to worry about the extenuous, time-consuming and very tiring act of CPR and chest compressions. It's really, really neat. So forgive that, forgive me for that slight aside. Be that as it may, finance committee did meet and unanimously recommended this for approval and I so move.
Okay, this does not require a second, is there any discussion? Councilman Haggisson?
Just a quick question. You know, you mentioned this is a biannual grant. These are devices that are obviously needed. These are devices that you purchase quite frequently. These are devices that you usually, so I'm wondering why you, you, you didn't budget for these like you normally do in your budget as opposed to saying we need to, you know, utilize the reserve for contingencies when it's something that you clearly do usually every year or every couple of years because these things were out, they're very needed, but you normally budget for them. Why went, why wasn't it budgeted for and just go into the reserve for contingencies, the, you know, the emergency reserve fund?
Sure, no, that's a great question. So we're very proud of our personnel and their return of circulation rate, which is nearing sixty percent now for, for citizens who are in cardiac arrest. The grant is something that we don't always know that we're going to get. We can, we apply for many grants and oftentimes don't get them. And so in this particular case, we didn't actually expect to get the grant. We were, we're very thankful that we got the grant and so we have to use reserve contingencies potentially because, because of budgetary reasons.
So when did you apply for this grant?
I don't recall, it came before council, earlier in February, I'm sorry, late fall of last year.
So late fall of last year, so when you presented that to the finance committee at that time, I believe you didn't say you were gonna, that you had headed budgeted actually in your own budget as opposed to when you came to the finance committee asking them for approval to submit the grant. Now you're, it seems like you changed it a little bit, that now it's like, hey, we don't have the money appropriated and now we have to use the reserve for contingencies. So what changed?
Well, certainly as the, as we've all seen, the cost for goods and services continues to rise. And so certainly that impacts our bottom line and our budget. But to be the most effective and efficient that we can budgetarily, that has caused us some challenges in our department for sure, just like many other departments in the city, just like my trip to the grocery store.
I'll be voting for this because of that, but I do hope that you, you recognize that, that small reserve for contingencies is, it's only one point two million dollars and just in today, ten percent of it's gone. And so normally that was budgeted in your, your budget before those grants were submitted. So I just, I hope you can find that within your budget and actually with the city manager, you budget for these things that you constantly have need of, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Missions?
I'll just say firsthand, from, from having worked cardiac arrest without these devices and having done it with them, the difference that it makes for our citizens when they're experiencing cardiac arrest is unmatched. Without getting into all the medical diagnostic details of what it actually does to the human body suffering in cardiac arrest, it's, it's just, it's pretty amazing. And one thing that I take tremendous pride in in our city is the way that we have invested in this equipment for our citizens throughout the years and being at the cutting edge on this. And I just really appreciate this. So how, how many Lucas devices do we have now with?
So we have fourteen Lucas devices. So they're on all of our frontline ambulances and supervisor vehicles.
Fantastic. And so will this be the fifteenth?
No, this will replace one of the aged units that, that will be taken out of service.
Okay, excellent. I'll be supporting this. I appreciate you bringing this forward and I appreciate you doing the legwork to get the grant approval to help offset the costs.
Thanks, sir.
All right, anybody else? Thank you so much, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
Wonderful. Okay, moving on, I know you're staying up here with us. On consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating nine hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus and related equipment for the fire department. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Fire Chief Greg Wormser, will you go ahead and let him speak? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you again. As you may be aware, we've tried several times for this type of grant. Once again, you know, grants are a little bit ambiguous in the sense that you don't always get one when you apply for one. And so in this case, we actually thought the grant had closed when we were notified early one morning that we were successful in getting this grant. This is a pretty impactful grant for our team. Our self-contained breathing apparatus is what we wear on our backs when we go into an atmosphere that is dangerous to life and health and not sustainable. And so these packs will replace packs that are long overdue for their useful life. We've tried for about three years to get a grant. We've tried for about three years to get this in the budget some other way. And so we're very fortunate to be able to receive this grant, one of the largest grants we've received just for equipment in, in my tenure in some twenty-seven years. So very, very happy about the grant. It'll certainly be very beneficial to our workforce with bringing them some state-of-the-art equipment that is long overdue. And with that, I will take any questions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, this did go to finance. The dollar amount that you outlined is slightly misleading as, as I understood it. But I wanted to just bring up one, one name and it's Brian Jones. And if you all don't know, both watching at home and in this audience, Brian Jones has been with the Lynchburg Fire Department for how long?
For about twenty-four, twenty-five years now.
I can't tell you the dollar amount, but I have a feeling it's in upwards of six figures about what this professional saves this city because he's the guy who goes in and tinkers with these things to make sure they work just right for men and women when they go into a fire. And I don't think he's committed enough. Respectfully, I don't know if he's compensated for that extra work, but this is helpful. I believe it's helpful to him and he's worth recognizing for, for that work in addition to everything else he does for the city. But this did go to finance, this is something that I'm very excited about and I do so move.
This does not require a second, is there any other discussion? Councilman Missions?
Are we doing a complete change of what you guys are wearing?
Yes, so we're replacing every air pack and every riding position, including a matching face piece for each individual responder, just like we have now.
What model did you go with? Did you stick with the Scott or did you go?
We have not selected a model yet, that's correct.
Okay, and the only thing just offering from experience that I would suggest is I know we ran into some issues with what we purchased previously because we were one of the first ones to purchase it. And this is huge. It is definitely needed, definitely needed. This is, you know, for the people in the audience that don't understand, this is the lifeline. This is the difference between surviving and not surviving when you're going in to save somebody. Is this, this tool right here. So it's so important that we invest to make sure that our men and women in the fire department make it home at the end of every shift. I really believe that. So with that, my only suggestion is, is that we don't try to go cutting edge and end up with the issues that we had.
Certainly understand, I appreciate that, absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Chief Wormser.
Thank you.
Okay, consideration of adopting an ordinance amending section thirty-six dash one twenty-six point six of the Lynchburg City Code relating to the requirement specific to business license filings in the city. Council was previously briefed on this item during its February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three business item briefings. Is there any discussion? Vice Mayor Feraldi?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll, I'll second.
Madam Mayor, speaking to the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
This'll just make it a little bit easier for our business owners and I appreciate council's consideration on it.
I agree, any other discussion?
Is, is our Commissioner of Revenue here to speak to this issue or is this the city attorney?
I, I kinda took the lead on this, but Mr. Knuckles is familiar with, with what we were doing. I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Maybe if he can describe it, then you can backfill if you would.
Mr. Knuckles?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, member of council, this, this is only extending the extension period for businesses to renew their license from a thirty-day extension to a ninety-day extension. And it, it has to be made by request of the business prior to the due date and that's the, that's the motion that's before you.
How does that actually affect, is there, how does it affect the city or the business? Help me understand.
Well, we have a May first filing deadline and a lot of times businesses do have extensions to file their business returns, some even as far out as September, October. So it really allows the business ample opportunity to gather the gross receipts and remit them. We, we ask a lot of instances that they give us their best estimate and then true up when they finally file the return. But if they ask for the extension, this would allow them to do it for a ninety-day extension as opposed to the current thirty-day.
Gotcha, thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I would add, there are a few technical amendments that are included in there as well, just some cleanup to the ordinance as, as we went through it.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thanks. Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024 budget calendar. Council was briefly, previously briefed on this item during its February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three business item briefings. Mr. Benda?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, earlier this evening and during the business item briefing, kind of outlined the proposed fiscal twenty-four budget adoption calendar. After having sent it to you late December of twenty twenty-two, got some feedback input from many of you and what, what kind of availability. Also made, made the mention that Dr. Wilder often reminds that being a city council person, you kinda earmark Tuesdays as they are. And so really drove into the different Tuesdays between now and May. I will highlight that you do have a joint work session with the Lynchburg City Schools. On March twenty-eighth, you have a couple of public hearings on April fourth having to do with the proposed real estate, real property tax, water resources rate study and the proposed fiscal twenty-four budget. Councilman Haggisson did raise some feedback. I had proposed that the work sessions, as we held them last year, we had held them in the second floor training room. That, that room has all the connectivity, all availability for, so that the public can attend in person and/or to stream it themselves. Again, my, my thought there is to, it being a work session that we're gonna roll up our sleeves and kinda work around the table. But Madam Mayor, that's the proposed budget adoption calendar as, as I have it listed there.
Thank you, Mr. Benda. Vice Mayor Feraldi? I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Move approval.
Oh.
I'll move approval if I can get a second. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to yield to, to.
Okay, we got a second, thank you.
With that motion for approval, I, I must have voted.
It was an oversight for me on a typo here that I, I missed. It should be March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three instead of twenty twenty-two. But I, I guess with that.
Okay.
We'll give you that.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to yield to Councilmember Missions for his question.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have a question. You mentioned a public hearing on April fourth for the real property tax, is that?
Yes.
Because it's an increase?
The real property, I think regardless of the percentage increase annually has to be adopted. So it's, you hold a public hearing annually, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And the percentage increase at the state, I think it's one percent or whatever, anything above that, it has to be put forward.
So, so we're having a public hearing on April, because there's an anticipated increase, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna, just be clear on that. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Any other discussion? Councilman Heggelson?
Just if we can have that flexibility, like I mentioned this afternoon, I just, you know, have, I can appreciate the second floor training room. Years ago, we used to have all our work sessions up there, and until we started voting on, at the work sessions, lots of money, schools being built and whatnot up in the, up there. So we said, hey, let's get back in front of, in council chambers and actually be on camera. I'm just, I'm a little fearful of there from the standpoint of citizens being able to come and view. So hopefully, if we have the first meeting there, but then we can, if council is agreeable, to say, hey, it didn't work well. Let's move back to the chambers at a later date. I imagine we can amend the budget, budget calendar without having to hold a public hearing and advertise and all those kind of things, right?
I look to Alicia as far as the amount of gymnastics involved in changing a place seems like a lot, so.
Right, so this will be going, we're going to do a public notice since we're changing the location of our regular meetings, so I imagine that another public notice would have to be submitted to the newspaper to run if you change your location once again of your regularly scheduled meetings.
So if we do the first one there and it works fine, great, but I just, I'm a little fearful, because as I mentioned earlier this afternoon, to get to second floor, you have to have a card. You know, people have got to be able to be buzzed in to get to the second floor. It's a public meeting. People should be able to come freely there. It's a small, tight space. Lots of times, it's filled up with staff, so if citizens are wanting to come, maybe those seats are filled. So hopefully, that first one will go well. If it doesn't, I hope that we can change the next ones to be back here.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just wondered if the city manager would like to address his fears, as you did earlier today, about the staff and about the public getting in, because I think you clarified that.
We've had, Councilman Heggelson is right, we, many city buildings have begun to move into a posture that makes sure that people are safe. And so we have swipe card access, but we have for meetings involving the public, made sure that the elevator was keyed to where you can access the second floor. And so that, that element is, is removed. Then as far as, I think, concerns about too, too much staff and too little room for the public, you've seen maybe tonight, we've, we've done kind of a way in which we bring the city department heads when they're needed and not necessarily kept, kept around, so I'll pay attention to that. And then again, connectivity, all the same, same things that are in this room that make sure that you can see it, hear it, experience it, is on the second floor as well. And we'll make sure all those things are tested beforehand and make sure that they're, and I think if you remember, concerns about the public finding where we were, we had these very obnoxious, I call them obnoxious, signs on the front of the building, on the side of building, and elevators to ensure that people knew where we were doing the city business, okay?
Thank you, Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Any more discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Wonderful. All right, last item on the agenda. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the 2023 personal property tax ratio. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Mitch Knuckles.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this item was brought before you at the February fourteenth work session, and it is to request that City Council utilize a ratio that is allowed by the state code of Virginia. Against my assessment, to arrive at what I and hopefully y'all feel is a true market value for the vehicles, and the recommendation is that we adopt a ninety-three percent ratio, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles. Any discussion? Councilman Heggelson?
Just a quick question. So I know the recommendation is a ninety-three percent ratio, which means roughly fair market value with a three percent growth.
Right.
If we adopted the ratio at ninety percent, that's assuming no growth?
That, that would be level revenue from fiscal year twenty-two going into this year twenty-three.
And so you mentioned the two, your recommendation is ninety-three percent, making assumption of the growth, but ninety percent you could live with?
Well, I can, but that, I brought forward the ninety-three percent because that was the same growth factor we built in the prior year. The ninety percent, and then one of the other things we discussed was the fact there are fewer vehicles, and that's having an impact on the average value across the board as well. So the ninety percent, even with the ninety-three percent, we're looking at approximately sixty percent of folks going to have an increase in value on their automobile, where if we go with ninety percent, we're looking at closer to forty-five percent of folks having an increase in the value of their car.
So with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt it at ninety percent.
Okay. So motion is at ninety percent, and there's a second from Councilmember Missions. Do you want to speak to that, or speak to your second?
We did talk about this at the business item briefing, and the Commissioner has said two different items, and some of the things that were a little troubling was even in spite of the fact of trying to lower the assessments or lower the value, the blue book value to ninety-three percent, still, would you say sixty-some percent of the cars are appreciating?
Correct. Increase in value.
Yeah, which I teach finance, and with that, it's rare in ever, do you ever see a vehicle, a personal property, every mile that goes, every time those tires rotate, the value goes down, and at ninety-three percent, we had sixty percent of the cars appreciating in value like you would hopefully your stock portfolio or your house.
That's correct.
This is different. That's why I think the ninety percent would be good next year will be, and then too, as the budget times unfold, we can actually look at the actual, the rate going from three dollars and eighty cents to whatever other rate we'd like, but I think this is a good start, so.
Councilmember Missions?
Yeah, I think the most striking thing to me about this conversation when we had it was that it was actually a lower, like less vehicles, right? So we had it at the ninety-three percent. We're also looking at ninety-three percent of less vehicles, and we're still having an increase. So that's why I'll be supporting Councilmember Heggelson's motion to adopt this at the ninety percent ratio.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Does council want to consider offering relief through this, or just trying to offer as much level set as possible? That's the only, it's not a question directed at anybody, but I think it's worth throwing out for the public record as we're engaging this. That's front of mind for me.
If I may, I mean, I think that, like I said a second ago, one is the actual values. So if the values based on the blue book are a personal property that's appreciating, that seems a little foreign to me. Secondly, as the budget unfolds in these next coming months, and as we begin the deliberation, at that period of time, we can debate the rate, because that's three dollars and eighty cents, the current rate, and I'm sure in your budget book, you're going to say, you know, what ten cents or what a dollar is, just like you do for the one penny on real estate tax, and at that point, we could look forward to say, hey, here's how we can do tax relief for vehicles as well.
And if I could just add, last year, the General Assembly also adopted a law that allows you to set a separate rate for vehicles, other than the general class of personal property. So there's an avenue, if you want to look at just vehicles or motorcycles, vehicles and motorcycles, there's an avenue to do that.
Thank you.
Anybody down here wants to? Yes? She wants me to? No? No questions?
I just wanted to respond to Vice Mayor Feraldi's statement question. Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily even see this as relief. This is more or less a buffer of, of the ridiculous economy we're experiencing right now, because it just doesn't make any sense for the revenue from vehicle value to increase when the number of vehicles decrease, right? So if the number of vehicles decrease, vehicles aren't appreciating assets. We all know this. So keeping that as level as possible, coming in at the rate of ninety, at the ratio of ninety percent, I think is, is going to be the best way we can serve our citizens right now.
So I understood, Mitch, correctly, you could live with ninety.
Absolutely. You know, the vehicle values are greatly inflated, and to Councilman Heggelson's point, I mean, we're looking at sixty percent of the vehicle values going up, and even at ninety percent, we're still looking at in excess of forty percent. And that's, that really is something that's foreign, but unfortunately, with the supply and demand issues, that's what's been happening in our economy. And my whole reason for coming to y'all is to try and get at a truer value than what the hundred percent book value saying it is.
Thank you. Good support there.
So what is that three percent difference about roughly?
Well, it's, it's going to impact approximately six thousand vehicles. It's going to take six thousand vehicles that would have been above the value from last year and make them be below. And it still unfortunately leaves nine thousand out there that are going to increase in value, but it's, it's less than what it would be.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'd just like to thank our Commissioner, because you all remember last year when he brought it before us. We weren't aware of it. We weren't aware of it. He looks at the blue book every day and the NADA values and thought, oh my goodness, this is, this is something you need to address ahead of time. And last year brought us forward the fact that said, hey, we're going to assess these at seventy-five percent because the values went up so high. And I'm very thankful, because lots of us saw what happened in the counties after they went, oh, we didn't know about it. We didn't have a Commissioner of Revenue that told us ahead of time, and they had to scramble as their citizens were going, how in the world am I paying double on my car tax, and I did the year before? And Bedford and others started issuing checks, because they said, once they discovered it, they responded very quickly and said, oops, we overtaxed, we're giving back money. And so thank you for giving that, this to us ahead of time last year and again this year. So thank you.
Thank you all for considering the ratio. I appreciate it.
Okay, let's go ahead and cast our vote for the ninety percent ratio.
The motion passes six one.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.